Family following thankful that we're able to gather here tonight, Lord, discuss the city's business, Lord. Thank you for the protection you've been providing us, Lord. Thank you for the city workers, Lord, that work in unbearable heat, Lord. Help us to get through this meeting, Lord, and make decisions that would be pleasing to you, Lord. Please protect our first responders, Lord. In your name we pray.
Amen. All right, let's see. Yevy, won't you lead us into place today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize, meaning the order. Chief Gilbert, I apologize. I've known you since you was knee-high in the grass on Brezley Street.
I prefer that over the alternative.
All right, praise and recognition. I want to start off, I want to give praise and recognition. There's, I mean, I could go down the list, but anybody and all involved in the fireworks show Sunday night, that includes St. Albans and Nitro P.D., Fire Department, Public Works, Parts of Rec, and anybody else that was involved. Joe Stevens, Case Bolt and I are smart enough to get out of Joe's way and let him do his thing, and he does a wonderful job. And it was, it was a great evening, and I will put that fireworks show and that finale up against anything that happens in the state of West Virginia. It was awesome.
Mayor, Charleston P.D., South Charleston Fire Department, and DNR had their boats on the water as well to help us out.
Coast Guard.
Coast Guard, yeah, they drove across the bridge right when the show started.
Yeah, and they were lost on the wrong side, had to drive over to the same Albin side after the lights were turned off, but that's okay. So it's a team effort, and our folks do a wonderful job as well as Nitro folks and Joe Stevens. I don't know what his title is in Nitro. I don't know, but I'd love to have one in St. Albans. So, but... Yeah. Is that what it is?
Yep.
But he does a wonderful job. So, everybody involved, thank you all for a great evening, a great show, and we'll go put it up against anybody in there. Got it. Any other praise or recognition?
Mayor, I'd like to thank all the workers that fixed the water leaks on Grant Street and McKinley. We had numerous leaks in a very short time, and it worked at unbearable heat, ninety degrees plus, and I appreciate all the work.
They do a great job. The problem is when it's hot and dry like it's been. Say, this is the ground around the pipe. As it gets hot and dry, it pulls away, and that creates movement in your pipes, and that's where the leaks are coming from. It's worse this year than it has been. Then when it gets cold, everything squeezes back up, and we have a few, but not as many as we've had this summer. They've done a tremendous job. They really have. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to add to that also. We had a leak in my son's yard right across the street from me, and I mean, before you could blink an eye, the hole was covered and fixed. They've done a wonderful job. And like you say, I've seen many leaks out this year, and that one right there was right in front of the house, and they were spectacular. They did a real good job. They responded, I mean...
Like the PGA commercial, these guys are good. You ain't getting no doubt.
I also appreciate that they put up with the complaining about people were about dirt and then parked the spot and getting the leaks fixed.
Yep. And they'll eventually get over there and spray it down and use the street sweeper and clean things up.
I'll say one real quick. If you don't know, I'll say this. They're probably going to get mad at me, but someone who I think works second to none here in the city as far as their work ethic and how hard they work, I've got to work with lots of projects the last few months and even before that, but didn't realize how much he really did and how much he cares for the city. And that's Marshall Cheney. I think he should be owed gratitude for all he does for the city, and he's really an asset to us.
I've known that for a while.
Oh, yeah. He told me he did one of these spotlights. That's why I wanted to go ahead and do it.
Y'all seen when he's got to go in front of the camera for an interview? Any other recognition? Any other praise or recognition? All right. Approval minutes from City Council, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do we got any questions, discussions, or changes? If none, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. All business. We need to direct City Attorney to file any necessary complaint litigation paperwork regarding the broadband project.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
What's been our response?
They sent us, we did ask for the first time around, show us what you've done, this and that, and they're basically saying it wasn't their fault, that Jeremy was the project manager, that he filed the application in December of last year. They are claiming that DOH, who says they never got anything, said that they lost it, and then they filed another one in April, and I don't know why the four-month delay, but they're blaming it on DOH, why they never got started. And of course, they're saying Jeremy was the project manager. His name was on it. We filed that FOIA request asking for anything that Alpha had done, and apparently they submitted the application to DOH under the city of St. Albans instead of under Alpha. Either way, it's too late. I talked to Jeremy. He said it's too late to do what we wanted to do because all of the other ones are in there. And so we told them, give us our money and let us know what you've spent. They gave us some receipts, but very de minimis. They showed us a couple of diagrams that they did, but they still have not showed us how much this money they spent. So we have a meeting that we're going to set up. Under our agreement, it does say that we will negotiate in good faith before any litigation. So we've agreed, the mayor and I, to meet with Alpha and his lawyer. We told him we can do it anytime this Thursday, and we're waiting to hear back from them. So that's kind of where it is.
But if this litigation is not settled by the end of this year, do we lose any money?
Well, that's the issue and the concern I have. We don't know yet. It's already marked, okay? But I'm hoping that Alpha and Mike has basically like filtered, or filtered in this meeting, but in the meeting we're going to have, but I'm going to be straightforward with. I'm going to listen to what they got to say.
And other than the application, there are other things that they just didn't do. For example, the biggest one is, under the agreements, they have to get BNO license in the city of St. Albans. And they just still have it to this day.
They refused.
From BNO. They're trying to say they don't have to, and that's not, that's not correct.
Any other questions or discussion?
You said the money's already earmarked current for the fiber project.
Right, right, right. I'm just hoping that...
It's freed up prior to...
It's freed up, yeah. Well... What's that old saying? Talk about taking somebody's gun, they'd have to pry it from my cold, dead hands. The other eight hundred thousand dollars ain't going that way unless I'm absolutely told I'm going to go to jail if, if you don't give it to them. I mean, that's, I... That's the way I'm approaching it. I personally believe that, I don't believe them that they spit money, maybe a little bit, on our project, but I personally believe that they took that money and used it towards that Putnam County project. I could be wrong.
Even if you're wrong, it wasn't used in St. Albans.
No, it wasn't. I mean, we were told months ago, we need a storage place for fiber and materials. We gave them a place over inside of the MUC. We've yet to see, we've yet to see the first ditch dug. So there, I'm trusting Mike and them to do as good as they possibly can. All right, so...
So do we have to have a wish list?
We'll talk about that next council meeting. All right. All right. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. Outdoor fitness area site determination. I'm going to start it off. Because we don't know what we're going to do with the junior high property yet. I like the Hansford property myself. That's just me personally. I think it's accessible to the seniors. It's one of the three main thoroughfares through St. Albans and all terrace, Washington Sixth Avenue, and Route sixty. But that's just my opinion, so...
Well, do we, we still need to get an ordinance or something and transfer that property to us?
Yes.
We can't do anything on that property.
I thought we...
We have to...
You talking about the trade property?
Yes.
That's already been voted on. It's...
Yeah, we voted on it.
To do the deeds.
Well, we still have to do a bond. Yes. Our charter says the property we have to do is...
Which is the, I tried looking on that last, which is the property that we're going to actually own?
All right. Well, if you're standing in front of the church on Washington that comes down African on terrace, Washington Street, we owned the property straight across where that old apartment building was.
Right.
All right. They want that property versus the property across... Well, diagonal from our, where we own, but across from the church.
The two parking lots, more or less.
Yeah, yeah. It's a bigger piece of property, and we've approved to move forward with the exchange. And so we just got to get everything finalized with an ordinance and deeds and all that good stuff. So, me personally, I, I mean...
I'd rather see it at the junior high property. I'd rather see that property developed. I think that that is our main thoroughfare through town.
The only concern, the only concern I have with the junior high property, that is, what I said earlier, is we haven't determined as a council what we're going to do with that property yet.
But we can.
We haven't can tonight?
No, but we don't have to determine.
Oh, yeah, there's a timeline. There's a timeframe that we haven't...
We've got to stop getting ourselves behind the timelines.
Yeah. But again, I don't vote unless there's a time.
Mayor, I think that the Washington Street site near the Hansford Center makes sense just due to the scale of project. You know, if you put something the most of the stamp size onto the junior high property, then you're going to have to work around it in the future rather than putting it in a location where it pocketized most of the space.
My thought, plus I said a facility that has restrooms, medical care, and what have you, access to.
And all the seniors who are right there at most of the time anyway, in the Hansford Center, that's why I would say that.
Right.
I was thinking of the youth factor of it. You're going to get kids out there. I mean, you have a Hansford Senior Center.
I tried, I tried to get it to the high school. I tried to get it on high school property, but they didn't. They said they don't have room. I thought it would be great for fitness and P.E. classes as well as the public walking the track. They said they didn't have room.
And to me, my whole point is exactly what you were saying, that build around it. That can be one piece. You could have, I say have a little food truck area there to where you could have the electric outlet there. They could come set up food trucks. They could rent those spots.
Where you going to park all these people?
I mean, there's, there's area there. It's not, it's not a tiny lot. It doesn't, I mean, you're talking about it being too big for, for the, for the workout facility.
Are you talking about at the Hansford Center?
No, 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 at the junior high. The old junior high property.
I just didn't think we had that much parking available because...
You'd have to develop. It would take away from...
What about the property of Walnut and Washington?
I'd agree with that one a lot more.
Not a bad situation.
You're also going to have, I mean, you're right near the train tracks. You're going to have a train dust that's coming over onto that as well. Like, it's going to get filthy over there. I like Washington, I like Washington and Walnut much more.
Is it digging up?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I mean, the...
You can walk to it.
Studio size...
I like it. It's my award.
The studio size is what, thirty-eight by seventy-six?
I'm sure the church wouldn't mind loading up their parking lot for the week.
Non-service time.
And that, that's not a bad option either.
I like that idea.
I know the company wasn't as keen on that option as others, but I don't mind that because it's a high-traffic area. You got parking there with the church parking lot. You got street parking there in Washington.
And it's neighborhood central to where you are walking. I mean, part of your exercise...
There is a lot of walking there.
Hitting there.
Except, I mean...
They would cover, they would cover the whole lot. It's perfect.
There'd be a little extra there, but yeah.
And that's fine. I mean...
Less for parks that have to cut.
Less for parks that have to cut. You could put a bench there that people could sit on and relax for a minute in between workouts. I mean...
It'd be easy for people not familiar with St. Albans to get to.
Yeah.
Draw some people.
It would.
I mean, so easy to tell. Go to the stoplight, make a right, I'll cut off Harris, and you run into it.
And if you're wanting to do pickleball, it could save the property over there near the Hansford for outdoor pickleball, which would be more appealing to the senior area.
Without the studio, you could probably get three to four courts.
Right. At the Hansford property, you mean, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that could be, and then you have the Hansford Center there as well that could be...
What do we need to do, come up with some ideas and vote on them?
Make a motion.
Best part of...
I make a motion. We use the property of Walnut and Washington to save them. Charlie can have it.
All right. Do we got any further questions or discussion? I would almost add, just... If it is of appropriate size, which I think it is. I don't know the size of the lot. You know the size of the lot there? It's long enough. My problems are with...
Fifty-five hundred and forty or something.
It's a tenth of an acre. I just looked it up.
Oh, is it really? That should be plenty of room. I'd say for thirty-eight or seventy-six. All right. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. Oh, wait. They said aye. Did somebody have a question? All right. All right. All right. No new business. Suggested ordinance, ordinance issued. Refer to ordinance committee. A request from City Clerk's office to amend Article nine five four point oh-two, collections of fees, rates, credits, hearing. Appeal to increase the annual gross income from ten thousand to fifteen thousand for seniors sixty-five years or older who own and occupy a residence in the city to apply for the reduced rate.
Mayor, you did a good job of explaining that. Ronnie here?
I just went with it.
I know. Ronnie here for any questions? If not, I will go ahead and move that to the ordinance committee.
So this is what we do to wait to file all right.
Currently, they, those that are ten thousand and under, now, this isn't renters. This is, they own their home and they're sixty-five years or older. If they have an annual income of ten thousand, then they can apply for the reduced rate. The problem is, is that we're starting to see some of our seniors with the increase of social security, you know, they might be eleven or twelve thousand. And these are people that pay the bills, and they're, they're starting to see that they're going to not get it. The poverty level is fifteen thousand. So this is still...
Are you very reasoned?
So we're basically helping the seniors that they're eleven, twelve, or thirteen thousand.
This is a widow or widower that has nothing.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I really think we need to help our seniors. You know, the ones that, they are the ones that try to pay the bills.
Any further questions or discussion? Or we got a motion?
You have a second.
And a second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. Ordinance is first reading. An ordinance amending Article one eight one point oh-two of the codified ordinances of the city of St. Albans, West Virginia, persons authorized to issue warrants for offenses.
Okay, council, this is the ordinance that we had last meeting. We had a little bit of confusion. Was able to work with Mr. Del Giudice and thank him for getting an ordinance ready pretty quickly. And just want to, well, I guess I should ask us their questions. This is the ordinance for Marshall and search warrants. If not, I'll move to second reading.
His face didn't look like a woman when you wrote it this time.
Yeah.
I think we're better now.
We're good.
Basically, what it does, it allows only the municipal judge to issue warrants or search warrants, and only upon an application by either Marshall or one of the police officers.
Any further questions or discussion?
The municipal judge is on vacation. He won't be getting any. Go to magistrate court.
No further questions or discussion. All in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. Ordinance is second reading. To consider on second reading an act upon a proposed ordinance entitled, Ordinance Authorizing the Acquisition and Construction of Certain Extensions, Additions, Betterments, and Improvements to the Water Works Portion of the Existing Combined Public Water Works and Sewage System of the City of St. Albans, and the Financing of the Cost thereof not otherwise provided through the issuance by the City of St. Albans of not more than three million five hundred thousand dollars in original aggregate principal amount of combined waterworks and sewage system revenue bond, Series twenty twenty-four A, West Virginia Infrastructure Fund, providing for the rights and remedies of and security for the registered owners of such bonds, authorizing execution and delivery of all documents relating to the issuance of such bonds, approving, ratifying, and confirming a loan agreement relating to such bonds, authorizing the sale and providing for the terms and provisions of such bonds, and adopting other provisions relating thereto. Councilman Page.
Mayor just did a good job reading that again. I'll defer to him for any questions before I make the motion to adopt.
Got to have a motion.
And everybody, when we did first reading, they should have had the little email from John Stump's office, the bond attorney.
Right.
They said plan to do second reading to September thirtieth. That's what we're doing now. Once bids are received, I'm assuming on these bonds, we can schedule third reading and a public hearing. So right now, this is just second, and then we'll get notice from John Stump's office later.
So we need a motion to move forward with this?
Yeah, so through second reading.
Okay, we'll accept, I'll move to accept the second reading.
Second, sir. Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. All right. Finance committee report recommendations. Councilman Cutts.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion for the approval of current invoices in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred thirty dollars and seventy cents.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries.
I make the motion for the approval to award bid to W.B. Tractor Company for a garbage truck for Public Works Department in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty cents to be paid via lease purchase from line item nine seven seven four five nine.
Sir. Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries.
I make a motion for the approval of seek bids for an operational study as requested by St. Albans Fire Department Chief Carney.
Questions or discussion? Chief Carney?
Basically, this, first of all, this doesn't commit us to anything. This is just a request for bids or proposals. But you, it's bringing in a neutral third party, or whatever you want to call it, to take a deep look at the fire department operationally. They look at staffing, equipment, station locations, response, capabilities, and needs, kind of get down deep in the weeds and see what we're doing well or what we could potentially do better and create a five, ten, fifteen-year plan moving forward, just to make sure that we're being smart with whatever money we spend or what we do purchase over the next few years. It's not anything that's been done that I'm aware of before, but I'll take any help I can get, so.
Like you said, we're not, we're just asking what it costs. There's no, there's no money.
You're right.
Does it hurt?
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. Okay.
I make a motion for the approval of purchase of new playground equipment from Metro Recreation for Parks Department in the amount of three thousand ninety-two dollars and forty-six cents to be paid from line item nine hundred dash three four one.
I would add to that is that money is coming from the insurance policy.
Yes, sir.
It's not coming out of our checking account.
Yeah, we had a vehicle that ran into playground in Ordinance Park. This is their insurance reimbursed, and I was for the damage that was caused.
What is the playground piece?
It's the, it's the newer piece that we have over between the basketball courts and the tennis courts on top. So they drove through the fence and plowed into the slide over there. So this is to replace the slide.
I hope everybody was okay then.
Actually, it was a medical incident.
Oh, was it?
It was a physical medical incident.
Hope everybody was okay then. All right. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. Letters and reports. Councilman Knight.
The only thing I've got is the Walk in the Park, Story Park, September the fourteenth.
Senor Revolution will be open this Saturday from ten to two. I'll be headed out of town. Vice Mayor Page has graciously accepted to come and be there for a little bit, maybe do a Facebook Live, trying to promote that. So the fourteenth is the story walk. The fifteenth is a rain day. If it does get rained out, am I correct on that? If the fifteenth, if it does get rained out, I'll be back later than the fourteenth. I can be there the fifteenth, but...
That's one to three.
One to three.
The fourteenth is also the party in the park, the Jimmy Buffett thing.
Oh, that's, oh, they do a great job, guys.
Yeah.
What's his name? Jim Snyder?
Jim Snyder.
Jim Snyder and Marcel. They were, like I said, they were down at the annual convention on Thursday night and did a tribute to Jimmy Buffett, and it was fantastic.
This is the third year they've done it here. It's been awesome.
They did like Charleston last weekend, didn't they? All right. Any other letters or reports? All right. Appointments, appointment of Della Dawn Epling to the St. Albans Housing Authority Board to fill the unexpired term of Priscilla Bass, who resigned with a term expiring seven three twenty twenty-eight. Questions or discussion?
I'll just say I've known Dawn, her husband Brett, for several years and actually was part... I'll just say I've known, uh, Dawn, her husband Brent, for several years and actually was part of getting them to move to St. Albans. And they're both phenomenal people, and I think that, uh, Dawn will do a phenomenal job on this board, just as Brent is doing on the P and Z board.
Any other questions or discussion?
Big shoes follow him, Priscilla.
I know, she's been a long time. I think she's got to take care of Bill. I think he's going down him a little bit, so. The old boy could light you up, but I'm telling you, gimme those.
She'll wake up.
She could, too.
Yeah. Uh, any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Announcements, Public Works Committee Wednesday, September fourth at eight a.m. at the City Garage. Parks Committee Thursday, September fifth at six p.m. at the Hansford Center. Finance Committee Monday, September ninth at four-thirty p.m. in the M U C conference room. City Council Monday, September sixteenth at six-thirty p.m. in the council chambers. M S four, M U C Board Tuesday, September seventeenth at five-thirty p.m. in the M U C conference room. Any further announcements?
Mayor, Saturday, September fourteenth, um, ten a.m. at noon, the Salem Police Department is holding a riding with the police safety event for youth cycling.
Very good. Excellent. Where's, where, I mean, over to police station?
We'll start at the police station, uh, we just, I'll talk about safety. We have a mountain bike club that's coming down. It's gonna set up obstacles. And then we'll take them on a ride through the city, uh, with a few officers on bikes and then cruisers to make sure everybody's safe. And then it'll end in Crafts at Cold for ice cream.
All right, I got one question. Help this go ride along?
Absolutely not.
Well, I was gonna lie.
There was no hesitation.
All right, any further announcements? Thank you, Councilman Cuts. All right, uh, with no further announcements, we, it's time for public forum. Any resident wishing to address council, they step up to the podium, give you name, your address. You got five minutes to speak your piece. With term, nothing?
No.
With no apparent public forum, uh, will we entertain a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Sir. All in favor say aye.